Good evening. We're opening the public continuous hearing on Park Central. Mr. De Petrie. We have a few letters that I'm going to have Karen read into the record. The one, first letter would be with the, submitted by the fire chief.
Date of review is November 12, 2015. Location is residence at Park Central. Reviewers: Joseph C. Morrow, Fire Chief. Access. Number one, all turns, access and cul-de-sacs shall be designated to accommodate the vehicles to the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. Bus 45 design standard. Two, all drainage, culverts, septic system components, underground utilities and chambers shall be designated to AASHTO, H-20 and HS-20 weight load, loading standards. Three, access along all streets and driveways shall meet a minimum height clearance of 15 feet to allow for proper ingress, egress of fire apparatus and emergency vehicles. Access gates. The access gate from Blackthorn Drive must operate for easy access for emergency vehicles. The developer shall provide options and obtain approval from both the fire and the police departments prior to occupancy for any units. Address non-applicable. Building numbering. Every building in the Commonwealth, including but not limited to dwellings, apartments, building condominiums and business establishments, shall have affixed heretofu a number representing the address of such building. Said number shall be of a nature of size and shall be suited on the building so that, to the extent practicable, it is visible from the northeast street or road providing vehicle access to such building under Massachusetts law, Chapter 148, Section 59. If by placing the number on the house, the number is not easily read from the street, then the number must be placed on a stake or similar structure near the street at the edge of the driveway leading to the house. Code of Towne of Southborough, Section 124-2. Driveways. Driveways to individual residences shall be a minimum of 12 feet in width to accommodate fire apparatus and overcome restrictions due to curves and reduction in width due to snow storage. Fire department sprinkler connections. All sprinkler connections shall be of sorts type, four-inch hose connection for all new and modified systems. Fire lanes. 525 CMR 10 dot O2 10. All roadways of less than 22 feet wide shall be designated as fire lanes and shall be posted as such. Fire hydrants. Spacing of five hydrants shall meet the requirement of NFPA for a residential development. A fire hydrant shall be located within 50 feet of the fire department sprinkler connection on the two apartment buildings. Fire sprinklers. The apartment building shall have sprinklers installed per NFPA 13. Parking, non-applicable. Permits. Standard plan review prior to the issuance of building permits, as well as smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, oil burner and/or propane inspections, shall be required prior to the issuance of final occupancy permit. Response times for fire, medical and other emergencies. The proposed structures are well within the department's response goal to emergency incidents of four minutes or less 90 percent of the time. Water supply. Adequate tests shall be performed by the proponent and submitted to the town to ensure that the required water-fire flow exits in coordinate, in accordance with ISO and NFPA requirements. Tests shall be conducted in peak demand times, if at all possible.
Karen, the next one would be the condition of the police department. Mr. Pollak.
From Kenneth Paulus. Hi Karen, I just spoke, I spoke with Joe today. My only concern is that the developer follows through a public safety security access gate, remote control, question mark, at the rear of the property as discussed at our meeting several weeks ago. Have a great weekend. Thanks, Ken.
Megan, these letters you keep on file because it get to the time that they'll become under conditions, okay? The next letter is from the planning board.
Dated November 13 to Leo Barlini, Junior Chairman, zoning board of appeals. Referencing the residence at Park Central, William De Petrie, Capital Group Properties. Thank you for sending the plans dated November 4, 2015, for the projects at Park Central to the planning board for review. Please note, the planning board received these plans on November 10, 2015. We acknowledge your request to have comments in by November 25, 2015. However, the planning board's next meeting is November 16, 2015, at which time the planning board will review these plans for the first time. This does not give adequate time for the planning board to review these very complex projects. The planning board understands the ZBA's approval deadline is in December and is meeting on November 18, December 2 and December 9 to meet this deadline. It is not appropriate for town boards and the public to have such a short, short review in common time in view of the magnitude and complexity of these project comprising of the proposed 180-unit 40B project and 158 single duplex and triplex developments. The planning board will begin to review these plans at its next meeting and provide comments after an appropriate and thorough review process. The planning board respectfully requests that the ZBA consider requesting an extension to give adequate time for the planning board, as well as other departments and the public to review these projects. Sincerely, Donald C. Morris, Chair.
Okay. The, we've got most of our applies from the boards except from the planning board. So, the thing is, I would like to take, and we have a deadline of December 31st on the application, and I think that I'd like to be able to see if we could continue that, which would give the planning board a little bit more time because of the holiday for Christmas and everything, the month is sort of, you know, it's a very, December's a very tight month. So, I would like to see if we could get a continuance, Mr. De Petrie, on the application because the deadline is the 31st of December. And to, the other thing is because we have the issues going through conservation, which will be finalized eventually also, and that would also give the planning board some extra time, too.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem granting an extension, but I'd like to know how much time the planning board's gonna need because we can't complete our plans until we have comments from the planning board. We've got the comments from the fire department, the police department. I met with DPW today, I have their comments.
Right.
We have conservation. Our first meeting is tomorrow night, so we're kind of at a standstill, so I'd like to, you know, I don't want to go on indefinitely looking for a two-week extension, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay. Mr. Morris, can you state, you know, what time your board need or looking for to make your comments to the ZBA board? You need a mic, Don.
We didn't discuss how much more time. One of the things we did discuss was the comments back from Foster O'Neil. Is there a timeframe for that?
Yeah, we're supposed to have the comments back from them by December 2nd, to a point. So that's, you know. But what's happening now is Foster O'Neil and the architect, but the, De Petrie are working on the process of approval now. They're going through it together.
Mr. Chairman, I did get an email from Jennifer Bernie, the town planner, today, asking if I could meet with her and I assume some members of the planning board and a couple other department heads next week. I informed that I was out of town next week, but I'd be willing to meet the following week. She felt it would help expedite it if we had, could meet in person. So, you know, I am willing to do that.
Right, you can do that. Nothing, this board can't be involved in those type of meetings. It's because we're jurisdictional, so we can't. But you can, you're capable to do that with Mr. Morris.
Okay, great.
When they want. So what we need is just some kind of a general timeframe of what you think, and I think personally that if we give you until the beginning of January, I give you a month and a half, should be sufficient, you know, by, the, our issue is with the regulations of mass housing, we have to be very careful how long we let this go. And that's, you know, discussion what I had with Mr. Monchar on that, so. But if Mr. De Petrie agrees to give us that timeframe, that'll help us out go forward with it.
So if we give the planning board till Monday, the 4th?
Of January?
Yep. And then that would give us, you know, let's call it three weeks to incorporate those comments.
Well, if that would be the case, we make the deadline for the 4th of January, that you, Mr. Morris gets to support it to the board, and then the board would consider a meeting on the 13th of the 20th of January.
I think the later.
What?
I think, I think the later, the latter. So why don't we say, did you?
Well, what we should do is if we get this submitted, you know, by the 4th, we have a meeting on the 13th or the 20th of a, our board has to have a public discussion on what it is before it sets forward.
So why don't you put us on for the 20th, and we'll see how that goes.
Okay. The board agree on that, is that a date problem with anybody?
20th, 20th is fine for me. The 27th, the week after, I'll be away.
All right, so the 20th is?
For the January.
January, yeah, okay.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Morris, is that a timeframe that you feel comfortable with?
No. I'm hearing that already that some people are gonna be away during this timeframe, which means, that's fine. This is the timeframe of the year, usually when people go away a little bit during the Christmas and New Year timeframe, and that's basically the timeframe that we're being given to do this. So, January 4th, I guess at this point, without having talked with or looked at the schedule, you know, the availability of the planning board members, if we could, you know, put it at that point tonight, we're gonna be back here again December 2nd, right? The ZBA's meeting again on December 2nd, and then again on December 9th.
Not on this, and not on the 9th. We have, December 2nd, we have, and that's going to be the continuance of Fay School, and then the St. Mark's Solar Field Project will be on December 2nd.
When's the next time Park Central's on your schedule?
We don't know yet. That's what we're trying to figure out right now. That's the question we're asking, is when we are gonna continue Park Central.
Okay.
We had discussed to do it on the, on the 2nd, but with the issues that have come up from different things, tonight we were gonna make the final decision of when it was gonna be. So that we're gonna vote on that tonight of when we are gonna have it. What's that?
You have the 9th penciled.
That's it, yeah, but we don't, you need to change your mic on. But there's nothing, nothing for the 9th for a meeting right now. So we just need to know your timeframe, and that Mr. Petrie really agrees on, then we'll set, we'll go with the 20th of January, and that, you know, that gives you, you have people scheduled for the 23rd, the 7th and the 21st of December for meetings that I have here. So that's, you know, three meetings that you have in between now and then. So hopefully that would give you enough time to get it and then get it to us on the 4th, and then we meet on the 20th, so we get a chance to review it, and then on the 20th we'll discuss it and go forward from there.
Well, based on what I know right now and what we're all saying, for some reason, we were under the, the planning board was under the impression that this was on the, the Park Central was on the ZBA's agenda for today, December 2nd and December 9th. But if that's not the case, that's news, and that's good. And based on what you're saying, then the, the December 31st, the current December 31st deadline would then be moved to like January 31st?
Yeah, that's what, we're gonna change it, yes.
Is that right, Bill?
Correct. Yeah, I don't have the, I think I see 30th.
Well, and the continuance, I'm gonna extend it a little bit longer than that, Mr. Morris, due to the fact that we need final approval from conservation before we close, close it, and we don't know what that timeframe's gonna be yet. So we'll get a continuance to whenever, and then go from there when we get to that point where we're at. But the thing is, due to the fact of your letter, is the reason I'm bringing up the condition of changing the December 2nd and the 9th meeting. So that's why we're giving you guys the opportunity to go until the 4th of January.
We appreciate that. With all these meetings and so on, and Mr. De Petrie agreeing to meet with the town planner and other department people, you said next week or the week after?
The week after. And if someone can't make that meeting, I'll be glad to, you know, sit down with that individual pretty much personally, I can have the engineers present and whatnot.
And then would you be available between that meeting and January 4th for another one?
Yes, as many as they want, yep. We can meet during the day, we can come inform me to see the board, if that's helpful.
So, I, I think you've, do you have any more for me right now?
No, that's.
I have a question. There, when is this, when is the, the market rate project going to go before the planning board for site plan?
Once we get the comments back from the planning board and the other department heads, we're gonna incorporate all those plans, all those comments into what we wanna call, you know, a 95, 98 percent set of plans, and those plans we're gonna file with the planning board.
For site plan review?
Well, for the items that were agreed to and the special permit, yeah.
Yep.
But we don't wanna do it now because we want to incorporate any changes you might have into the 95, 98 percent, as well as, you know, department heads.
Of the 40B.
Of the 40B portion of it, the drainage and whatnot.
Right.
So I would say if you guys get us comments by the, you know, I'd like to get them before the 4th, maybe the last ones trickle in at the 4th, but I'd like to see some, you know, if possible, between now and then. I would say we should be filing sometime in February with you guys.
For site plan.
Yeah, I mean, you're calling it site plan, I guess I'm calling it, you know, modified site plan, for lack of better words.
So for the record, if you look at the conditions in the use variance, there's one section that refers to the ZBA performing the site plan review, which from our research is not proper. It's not, I'm not a lawyer, but I'll say it's not legal. We can't find anywhere that the ZBA has the authority to take site plan from either the selectmen or the planning board, wherever, wherever the town votes to have site plan performed, and from our research, we're, we can't find anywhere that the planning board can delegate that even if it wanted to. So, we'd be glad to have that discussion with you. I know that in the, in the use variance conditions, there is one section that says residual site plan, and then at the end of that section, it, there's a, in any, there's words that say, in any other oversight or jurisdiction under 174 dash 10. It's the site plan section. So our reading of that is that it includes the whole site plan review, not, there's no such thing as residual site plan review as far as we know. So we'd be glad to have that continued discussion, but as far as the planning board is concerned, we expect to perform the full site plan review as we do with any other non-40B project.
Thank you. As far as that goes, I'm not gonna have any discussion, Mr. Morris, on that at all. Mr. Cipriano has been involved in it, he is, and if there are any questions, then they'd be given to Mr. Cipriano to comment on.
Right, I just wanted to put it on the record tonight that we expect to have the non-40B part of the project come before the planning board, as it, as it should, for site plan review. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. De Petrie, I have an application for the continuance, if you could, for when you'd like to do that, and are you agreeable on the dates?
Go through them one more time, make sure we're all on the same page.
January 4th, and then our next meeting would be January 20th. January 4th will be, they have to submit to us by the January 4th, then we'll meet on January 20th.
Okay.
And then go forward from there, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we might not, depending on the amount of comments we have, we might not have the plans, you know, 95 percent, but I think we should still meet on the 20th. We can just, at least at a minimum, update the board, tell them where we are with the planning board comments, and we will have at least two conservation hearings by then. So I think it's a good idea.
Technically, on the, on the planning board comments, under the rules and regulation of mass housing, we have to approve those comments prior to.
Okay.
So it'd be something technically that you should come in front of us for them, because if it doesn't get approved by us, then, and you change your plans, you're gonna have to go back the other way. So that's something.
Should we meet the first week of January to review the planning board's comments?
Well, we'll get the comments on January 4th.
I mean, I'd like to, if possible, meet that week and then continue.
All right, so then would the board be agreeable to meet on January 2nd, 6th, which will be the Wednesday night after the 4th?
Let's see. I'm fine.
I am, all right. So, all right, so then what we're gonna do is continue our meeting, after we're done tonight, but not now, to January 6th at 7 o'clock. And we'll do that at the end of this meeting, but not right at this, this moment. So is that agreeable?
Yes, I've got the 6th at 7 o'clock, just to review the comments from the planning board.
Right, or any other board.
Or any other board, yeah, if you get more.
Submit, submit at that time, all right?
Okay.
Okay, so that takes care of that issue. The other thing is, tonight's presentation is going to be on the landscaping for, are there any other issues, Mr. De Petrie, you have as far as the, when are you going to do the continuance to?
So tonight, we're just, we're gonna, we wanna spend some time on the overall landscape plan, and then basically go into detail with the buffer plantings along the abutters on the Blackthorn Tower, Bantry Road area. And then at the next meeting, if the board so chooses on the 9th, we'd like to come back and go through the site lighting and the landscaping around the 40B phase of the project.
Okay, well, you wanna do that on the 2nd?
You'll be ready?
All right, 'cause we've got, on the agenda for the 2nd, we have that now, so we'll leave it there.
All right, and we'll skip the meeting on the 9th.
Okay, so on the December 2nd, the thing is going to be for lighting, and what else?
The overall lighting within the entire project and the detailed presentation on the landscaping around the 40B.
Okay, so that'll be for the agenda on the 2nd, and that'll be scheduled for 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
No, excuse me, it's not, 8:30.
You have an agenda already.
Yeah, it's for 8:30. We already, we have another agenda for that evening.
They're on the agenda for that evening, I need to.
So what did I say, 8:30, right?
I believe it is 8:30.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be scheduled for 8:30 on, yeah, so it'll be scheduled for 8:30 on the 2nd to discuss that.
Okay.
And then at that time, if there's any reason to reschedule something in between, if something comes up in the next couple of weeks, we can also do it at that meeting.
Perfect. Okay, so tonight, Larry from Beals &amp; Thomas, the landscape architect, was gonna give the presentation on the landscaping.
Okay, very good.
Ask him his last name, he speaks.
Excuse me, sir, you need to use the mic and state your full name and?
Check, check. Good evening, Larry Green, Waterman Design, project landscape architect. Just the board knows, I get a little excited talking about plants, so I may talk fast. If I do, just let me know, and I'll refrain myself back, so just sorry in advance.
As long as it's clear, you'll be all right.
I'll try. So, before I start talking about the landscape design, I just wanna take a step back and talk about the existing site itself and the, and the development itself is, if you recall, the project's size approximately 100 acres in size, as part of its development, approximately greater than 20 acres is being preserved, so as, in a landscape benefit, that's a benefit for the neighborhood. Secondly is, as part of this, you know, this existing site is altered, you know, it's been a worked site, and I see that, this alteration as a benefit. I see it as a benefit in multiple reasons. First one being is, this site is, it's a better example, this'll fit. This site is a, let me see, a successional forest. You know, you still have your poppers, you still have your gray birks, you still have your, your white pines, so this is still a site that's coming back from being altered. I see this as a benefit since that you're, as part of this development, you're not cutting any large majestic trees, so I see that as a benefit toward the landscape. Secondly is, I see this as being altered, is these wetland systems are also a benefit to the site design as well. It provides buffer to the neighborhoods, it provides buffers to the project itself, it provides diversity of plant communities and animals within the development. If you can see this line here, this kind of spaghetti-looking line, that's the existing path that there is now, if you wanna walk that site now, that's the corridor right now. As part of our development, we tried to maintain this existing pathway in our core roadway to minimize land alteration. So I see this disturbance as a benefit as well. Now, lastly, there are some interior, small interior stone walls within the interior part of this site. As part of our development, we are gonna try to take advantage of some of these stone walls where we can to try to show the history of the site. So existing, that's kind of a quick summary of that. Here's kind of the overall design and landscape. Before I get into that, during the previous discussions, we talked about that, as part of this project, part of the, part of this, the grading would occur off, off-site. As part of this design, we've designed the site so all the grading is occurring onsite, which aids in preserving the landscape buffer to the abutters. Can you see this kind of, I'm gonna call it neon greenish, you know, this neon green, this light green, that's the existing forest that we've preserved as part of this land development, as part of regrading the site to keep all the alteration on the inside of the site. Now, in talking landscape, we kind of, in my mind, we have three types of landscapes. You have street tree plantings, you have foundation plantings, and there's kind of two types of screening as part of this project. And the first one is street trees, is, I'm gonna bounce around, I apologize. Door, excuse me, here's that main corridor, we talked about, on the other plan, it was that kind of that spaghetti-looking road. Here's the main corridor that comes through the site. As part of this development, and as part of subdivision rules and regs, street trees are to be proposed 40 feet on center. We are meeting that, that standard, except in this area here where retaining wall is being proposed. The street trees on this corridor here are gonna be your larger street trees, you know, such as like your zelkovas, your lindens, your larger red maples, your October glory, your Freeman, your Armstrongs, such as that. I can show you a picture. You know, there's, it's these type of species here, your larger trees, if you can see, your larger trees here, which, which create a corridor, aid, aid in, you know, kind of creating a boulevard style, kind of on your main corridor situated here. Stepping back, on these, I'm gonna call them finger roads or smaller roads, what we're proposing is, in our street tree plant, is kind of create a smaller scale development, and these street trees are gonna be your smaller trees, you know, that'll flower, have an exfolium bark, have interesting leaf structure, so you're looking at your, your zelk, I mean, excuse me, your, your stuartia, your Persian parota, maybe even your ginkgo to give you a different, a little different variety. I can bounce again, I apologize. You're looking at these type of species here, smaller trees that kind of help define these Now, on regarding screening, as I said, there's two types of screening, you're gonna have your privacy screening, I privacy, I mean, kind of between your units, you can kind of see them, these little see them, these little, little, that's, that's to screen your neighbor, you know, you're gonna, you know, have privacy in your backyard, as such, like that's interior, small-scale screening, that'll be your, your larger broadleaf evergreens, that'll be like your inkberry, your Myrica, your rhododendrons, your mountain laurel, and your viburnum, so you get a variety, we also get a blooming cycle. Then the sec step, next step is your larger, your larger screening, which will be your, your perimeter screening and dispersed within the site, you're looking at your larger spruce trees, your Norway spruce, your blue spruce, and your white pines. Those are gonna aid in screening the abutters, which will complement the existing trees along the perimeter, I can, those will be, you know, these, these larger trees here, which all get, you know, your blue spruce are immature at about 30 feet high, your Norway's 40, 50, and your white pine gets into 50 to 60 feet high, so you get your larger, your larger evergreens along the perimeter, mind your way. And then you get into, kind of lastly, not lastly, but you get into, thank you, your, kind of your, your foundation plantings, you know, each unit's gonna have, gonna have a foundation planting, you know, that's gonna be your, your, your smaller broadleaf evergreens, your, your smaller deciduous shrubs, intermixing with your ornamental grasses, and then you're getting into, you know, smaller, I'm gonna call them garden trees, your dogwoods, your maples, your hothorns, your plums, your cherries, stuff like that. All of those are gonna complement, you know, your, your street tree corridors such as that. So that's a quick summary of the landscape design, you know, my goal in the landscaping, you know, is, is, you know, you, you create views, you screen views, you complement architecture, and you complement the existing plant communities, and that's kind of the core of our design in this project. And just, if you all recall that, you know, hopefully, as this project moves forward, we get into, when we get into construction, that we are gonna revisit landscaping, you know, we get into, we're gonna meet with the abutters again and talk about where we propose plant material, and we're gonna meet with them and adjust that as need be, to, because we're gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna miss something, and we're gonna say, okay, let's move that plant to better screen them, and most likely, we are gonna supplement that planting, because we are taking landscaping seriously.
Okay, I'd like you to be a little bit more specific on the actual landscaping around the area of the 40B buildings. The presentation, except for the roadways and stuff, for the other project, will be something that'll go in front of the planning board, that they will do the landscaping issues with. The roadway and stuff is something that we'll be doing under the, the 40B, but the, any type of a presentation on, around the 40B facility itself for landscaping and any, whatever.
We are, we are working on that design right now, I apologize, I don't have a lot, I will have that for you on, on the 2nd, you know, we're reconfiguring the park a little bit, trying to create more green space in that area. We're gonna, we're gonna carry the, the same plant community, plant community within, into the 40B, you're gonna, you're gonna have your same, your same street trees, you're gonna have your smaller ornamentals, we're gonna mix in those other trees, I guess, you don't have to wait till the 2nd, I apologize, I don't have a lot on that right now, we're still, we're still in design.
All right.
So, sorry.
Okay. Does the board have any questions technically on this right in the moment, because we're gonna do it after anyways? Okay. All right, any questions by anyone right now on this? Yes, sir, you need to get up and do a microphone.
Magid Yazzani, 16 A Bantry. So for greens that you're suggesting to plant between the abutters and the new development, how tall do they get? The evergreens?
Excuse me, would you grab that other mic behind you?
Thank you. So these are, these are the three evergreen species that were, were proposed along the perimeter, and your blue spruce, your Norway spruce, and your white pine. Your blue spruce get to maturity height of about 30 feet high, your Norway spruce get near the 40, 50 feet high, and then your white pine get to that, that 50 to 70 feet high, that's the maturity.
How many years does it take to get that high?
You know, you're looking at probably 20, in the 20s, 20s to 30s.
So 20 or 30 years from now, they'll be that high?
For maturity, yes.
How tall would they be when you plant them?
They'll be installed at, they're gonna be 60 feet, 6 to 8 feet in height at installation, and basically, they'll double in height in, you know, eight to 10 years.
So by the time that my kid's out of college and I've moved out, is when these trees will be their maturity and give us the privacy that we were hoping for.
We are providing these, and then we will be supplementing after construction.
And over here, the bright green is...
That is the, that is the...
Existing?
Correct, existing edge of woods.
Okay, so this tiny strip right here? Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we'll go forward. All right, we'll go forward, is that it?
That's it.
Completely?
Why don't you go into more detail about the buffer screening?
All right, along the perimeter?
Correct.
Along this perimeter here, what we're proposing is, I'll slow down, is along this perimeter, is, is these, probably these three evergreen species, these species are planted 15 feet on center, they're gonna be planted, you know, adjacent to the existing canopy, you're gonna have your existing plant material there, and then, I guess, on our project's side of that existing edge of woods, will be this evergreen screen of these three species that are, so, and we talked about, they're gonna vary in height, different, I like these species, they, you know, you're talking different color greens, different textures, and then you get different, different heights of, heights and, and quickness of growth.
As far as that goes, I understand what you're saying, thing is that when you go in front of the planning board, that, now, the only thing I'm gonna ask, if I remember right, in the condition, the decision that was agreed with the neighbors, some of this was in there, wasn't it?
Correct.
So the neighbors have agreed on a proportion of this already, in a, in a legal issue, which is in the conditions of the use variance, so that's something that needs to be remembered.
Part of that was, was grading off-site, which we've eliminated that.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Also, as part of that decision, we are incorporating this evergreen screen into, I'll call it Blackthorn Extension, as part of the decision, they did want evergreen trees every 30 feet on center, we, we met that where we could, and then it kind of, as the road meanders, we added additional evergreen trees.
That was agreed by the board on, that was put into the decision on the use variance by the board?
Correct.
And that, that part of it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, under the use variance, if we needed to, we were allowed to go onto the neighbors' property, what was it, 10, 20 feet for grading and clearing, we didn't have to do any of that, we were able to do it within our own property bounds.
Right, I remember that, I saw that in agreement, you had the right to do the easement.
Correct, so they granted us an easement, luckily, we didn't need any of it, so a lot of the, the trees that were in the easement area on their property are gonna remain, and then we've got some trees that are existing on our property that are going to remain, and then within, from that point into the project, we're gonna plant that row of blue spruce, white pine, and green spruce, 15 feet on, on center, that will go behind all those abutting properties.
And then, when you go in front of the planning board, then there'll be further discussion on that?
Yes.
But as far as the general approval through the use variance on it, that's presently on record now. And then the other issue is, on the 2nd, we'll discuss around the 40B unit area and anything else on the roadways, because that'll come under this, our approval.
Yeah, so on the 2nd, we were gonna do site lighting for the entire project, even though we still have to go before planning board, it's kind of hard to break it up and do one and not the other, so we was gonna do the overall site lighting design, and then we were gonna blow up the 40B area and just give the presentation on the landscaping around that.
Okay. All right. Is that it then? Quicker than I thought.
Well, we met with the neighbors today.
Okay.
For probably two hours, so we, you know, probably 10, 11 came to the office, we gave a presentation, I think we answered a lot of their questions, I mean, a couple of them still came tonight, but...
All right, very good.
Active.
I mean, that, that's very good to be able to work that out.
Yep.
And finalize things that way. All right, so then the, I guess the next step we're at will be to continue this meeting until December 2nd. Excuse me, go ahead, sir, you need to use the micro, please, Mr. Green.
Thank you. Howard Rose, 2 Bantry Road, this doesn't have to do with this subject, I still have a question from last time regarding when we're going to see another traffic study. I went back and looked at all the public documents, the last document done was June 20th, 2014, was based on not this site plan, but was based on access coming from Park Central, Flag, and the neighborhood. It has never been studied in its current form, in fact, it's here in the report, it says, understood that the residence of Park Central is but the potential first phase of a larger buildout of land controlled by the applicant and is demonstrated in plans prepared by the applicant and shown on the following page, the potential for additional traffic which could be generated by this additional development, and what percentage of that may utilize local neighborhood roadways is still not understood. It goes on to say, that should all be studied, that has never been done. When are we gonna get an updated study that shows how this is, how it's gonna affect our roads based on the entire buildout of the site?
I'm gonna have to review it, because I understood that when we did it and was done by our, what do you call it, was done that way, but if that, I've gotta think of, read what you've read. Mr. De Petrie, do you have any comment on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what date the report he has, we did email one of the neighbors, there's been three traffic reports done and a couple of follow-up to comments from the peer review, so Wendy De Michaels, we emailed all those today, I don't, not sure whether the town had them all online or whether he found them.
June 20th.
But in any case, under MEPA, we are updating the last, the most recent traffic report to represent this project here.
And the...
That should be done within a week or two.
But didn't we, when we did the traffic study, we did do the exit on Deerfoot, on Flag Road at the end of it? That was in the, the original traffic study after we had shut down the, the traffic through the neighborhood?
You know, I, I've not, you know, the, the last one is probably, um...
Excuse me, sir, you need to...
He has the June 2014, we have the latest one, which is August 19, 2014, which was sent to Wendy, and she said she was gonna send it around.
Hasn't been, and was that, what was that document? Was it a study?
Yes.
This is the review?
It was a traffic study.
But was that peer-reviewed by the town or by the...
Yes.
No, that hasn't been anywhere in the public record that I can find. So I'd like to see a copy of that, because according to this...
And what we'll do is, I'll have, the beginning of the week, we'll get Karen to go over it, and we can talk to the people that did the peer review for us and make sure we have all the proper paperwork and get it to you, Mr. Green. Okay? Excuse me, so you have to...
Can we have it posted on the website, please?
What?
Can we have the updated traffic study posted on the website for the ZBA Board website?
Karen, can you do it that way? You turn your mic on.
I'd have to ask the Assistant Town Clerk, but I'll be happy to do so. What's the date of that study?
I can, you can't, I'll, I'll have Danny send you all of them, so at least you have them.
Okay, yeah, so I can ask the Town Clerk's office.
Then we'll have to go through the Town Clerk and check it out. Either that, or when it's done, we have a couple of the neighbors that we give information to, which can get it out to all of you as soon as we receive it all, too.
But regardless, if it's done, it still should be discussed as part of the public record.
Say that again?
Even if, once it's distributed, it hasn't been discussed as part, as part of the public record, we haven't seen this enough to discuss it yet.
Yes, we have. We've discussed all the public reviews, and the peer review was done and back almost two years, year and a half ago, but it was done at the...
That's my point, it's a year and a half ago, which is before this study, the, the document specifically calls out needing the final engineering plans to do an actual study. The final engineering plans came out two weeks ago. We have not studied this, this particular plan with the final engineering plans, because they just came out a week and a half ago. So the reviewer has no way to possibly look at that, because he didn't have them, because they didn't exist.
The study that was done had 500 and something units on it, that's when there was, we were asked to look at a worst-case scenario, there would, there would have been three 40Bs there. This project combined doesn't, you know, it has, you know, possibly a third less than that.
I agree with that, but I, I still haven't seen a study that had all that coming through one point. It also, I guarantee, didn't have the condition that the state is possibly going to close Flag Road, so what happens to our local roads? Now, MEPA is going to study the state roads, and what happens on nine, but it's our responsibility to the town to look at our town roads and what the impact of that is based on those other scenarios. That has not been done.
And what we'll do is then, in between now and the December, the second, the meeting on the 2nd, we'll go through this and review it, and I'll ask Mr. De Petrie to also do it and respond to us, and then we'll go through, I'll go through it and review it on our end of the board also, and see where we're at, and then we'll discuss it again at the December 2nd meeting, because we're gonna have some two meetings in between to do it and see where we're at. Because I thought, and I don't know if I remember 100% right, but when we did the last review, the access was cut down out of the neighborhood and coming out at the end of Flag Road, and that was through the last review, and it was for the total of the 586 units. So basically, that was it, so the only difference is, this plan is the same design, located plan, it's just this one's certified by the engineer and the first one wasn't, but it's the same location, coming out the same direction and everything as it was. But I will personally review it to make sure it was done that way, and I'll ask Mr. De Petrie to do the same thing with his engineer, and on the 2nd, we'll discuss it again and finalize, and if there's an issue, we'll do something about it, no problem at all.
I would, I'd also ask that if we still have our peer reviewer, that they review it as well, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, I'll talk to the peer review people and see where they, where we're at, too. So we'll, and then on the 2nd, we'll discuss it, and then if we have to go forward and do something different, we definitely will.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Yes, sir.
Hi, Dante De Michaels, 15 Bantry Road. My wife Wendy did get the, the last traffic report, that was about 6 o'clock tonight, so we haven't had a chance to look at it either. I think just all of us reviewing that and going, doing our due diligence, considering the size of this development, it just makes good sense, but that, that report did get sent out, and we all just need our time to, both residents and the boards need their time to review it.
Thank you, and like I said, we will, we discuss this on the 2nd. All right, any other further discussions by the abutters or neighbors? Mr. De Petrie, any further comments presently?
No, that's it, I just, we need to, a date to extend.
Yes, what would you...
So it was up December...
31st, and, and I think probably the... Go to January 31st with it?
That's a Sunday, so you wanna say the February 1st or Friday the 29th?
I would say January 27th.
Okay.
Because that'd probably be our last meeting anyways of the month. Right, Karen, that's right, we'll be meeting on the 27th of January, a normal meeting.
I'll be, I'll be out. I won't be, I won't be here on the 27th.
All right, so, um... Well, we can make the extension until the 27th, and then if we have to, we'll be gonna meet on the 20th or whatever is possible.
Okay, all right.
So the extension, I wanna meet prior to the date of the extension, I don't wanna have to do it the same day.
That makes sense.
So we'll, so if we get to that point, and may get done before then anyway, so we'll just go forward with it. So the, the application would have to be set out to the 27th. Okay, I'll, I'll wait for him to finish that. There we go.
27, what we're gonna, oh, then, are we gonna meet on, he extended it to the 27th, and the meeting date will be the 20th?
No, it's gonna be continued.
The next continued is the...
The 2nd.
Yeah, that has to be changed, because under the hearing, to be continued, is going to be until the 2nd of December. On this, on this, where it says hearing shall be continued to, this is the deadline, but the continuous is till December 2nd. Okay. Thank you. Now, I gotta sign that, right? Okay, can we get a motion to vote on the continuance of Park Central until January 27th, 2016?
Extension?
Yes.
Not continuing?
It's, the extension. It's, the extension.
So I make a motion to extend to, what was the date?
January 27, 2016.
To January 27, 2016.
Second, any discussion, all in favor? All right, okay, so that takes care of that, Karen, you can be able to file that. All right, then the next motion is to continue the public hearing until December 2nd at 8:30.
All right, I'll make that motion to extend, to extend the public hearing to December 2nd at 8:30.
Do we have a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Okay, we thank you very much.
See you on the 2nd.
See you all on December 2nd. Thank you now. Is that it, Karen? Yeah. Can we have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, good night.